Good evening, I'm Matt Bogic, the Town Administrator. I'm going to call the meeting of the Douglas Select Board to order shortly after 7:00 sharp on Tuesday, March 12th. The Board is holding a full reorganization, so it is the tradition that the Town Administrator preside over that section. All agenda items will be postponed until after the Board reorganizes, with the exception of the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you please stand? So there's sometimes confusion about Robert's Rules of Order and the reorganization of a committee. Just go over a couple of things. The nomination for office does not require a second to leave the floor open until all nominations are received. Once the floor is closed, if there is no debate, you may move immediately to a vote. But you may decide to speak if you decide to speak. So at this time, the chairmanship of the Douglas Select Board being vacant, I'm asking for nominations.
I'll nominate Mike Fitzpatrick.
Are there any other nominations?
I'll nominate Mike Fitzpatrick also.
We don't need a second, but we've got two nominations, which has the same effect. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, is there any discussion? With that, we'll put it to a vote. The only nomination on the floor is for Mike Fitzpatrick to serve as Chair. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Mr. Chairman, your meeting.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for the support. What we're going to do now is take nominations for the Vice Chair's position. Do I have any nominations?
After some thought of this position, with who we've got sitting here, I feel the younger view would benefit the Board. So I'm going to nominate Maxwell.
Do we have any other nominations? With that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we're going to bounce around a little bit on the agenda. The first thing, because we have a little bit of a conflict, so Matt's going to be jumping back and forth from Finance Committee meeting to this one. So I'm going to go right to number three, which will be ratifying the contract for the Assistant Fire Chief Kelly Manning.
You can take up two, if you don't mind, because Mr. Birch is here.
Okay. So if you don't mind waiting, if you don't mind waiting 30 seconds, Kelly, I'm going to go back to number two. Mr. Birch, would you like to join us? So the second item is the Conservation Commission appointment for Mr. Birch. For the sake of transparency, I'm going to recuse myself on this. It happens to be my son's father-in-law.
That's your first official duty, Mr. Vice Chairman.
Do you mind holding my hand through this?
While you're gathering, I'll ask a couple of questions, and maybe the other Board members will as well. So the Administrator doesn't review these applications.
Oh, do you have my application?
I think so.
That was previously on two other town boards. I was on the Open Space Committee for a number of years, and then I was appointed to the Planning Board to fill out an 11-month term. That was probably about 15 years ago, and that's it.
So from your professional background, do you have exposure to conservation issues and wetlands protection?
From some of my real estate background, yeah, I'm aware of some of the rules for conservation, wetland, you know, how far you can build from wetland, stuff like that. And when I was on the Planning Board, I did take a class for Robert's Rules of Order. So the town paid for it, too. It was nice. I was up at Holy Cross, and it was a nice class, so.
Are you generally comfortable with the frame of mind it requires to hold people accountable to written plans that have been submitted and enforce the things that they promised to do through the Conservation Act?
Yeah, absolutely. Just, you know, want the town's best interests. And, yeah.
So do we have a motion to appoint Mr. Birch to the Conservation Committee?
I'll make a motion to appoint Joseph Birch to be...
Josiah.
Josiah, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Josiah Birch, to a full-member position of the Conservation Committee.
Sorry, it's an alternate.
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 So the motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Oh, thank you. All right, thanks a lot.
I'll be in touch, Josiah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
Okay, Kelly, we're back. We're going to move on to number three, which is to ratify the contract for Assistant Fire Chief Kelly Manning. So last time, this was on our agenda last time, and I actually raised a question on the contract. For the sake of the Board, I did have a couple of different conversations with the Town Administrator to give me a different view, or from his standpoint, what his thoughts were on this, to try to help me get my head around it. The biggest thing, and there's nothing else other than what, and I blame Matt to his face, what Matt and the Finance Committee had drummed into my head is, whenever we have to do anything or buy anything in town, the first question you need to ask is, how is it paid for? So then that gets to the section that I had referred to. There's a stipulation in there, it's under discipline. Bear with me for a minute, and I'll actually find that section. So it's under Section 8. And the question that I had was, in the event that, if there was a termination by the town and a such, the termination was subsequently vacated, reversed, or modified, the employee would have the option to either a lump sum severance equal to the balance of the salary benefits cost fees to be paid according to this agreement, and then some remaining term of this agreement for the then-son remaining term of this agreement, but a no less than 12-month salary of benefits, or could reinstate into the position. I don't anticipate this ever happening. I just, I don't see it. I'm not worried about that. It's not even a concern of mine at all. My concern is, is if, like I explained at the last meeting, we get two years, 11 months, 20 days into it, and something goes sideways, how do we pay for that 12 months? That's what my biggest concern was. Matt, the Town Administrator, had an explanation for me that somewhat satisfied it. I don't want to cause any more grief over this than what's already been caused over it. I guess, at this point, like I did on the other things that I was concerned with throughout the process with the Town Administrator, I conceded to it and allowed it out of respect for the current sitting Fire Chief. I agreed to something that he insisted on, and I'm going to do the same thing with this. So from my standpoint, my concern has been somewhat resolved at this point. I'll let it go. The next time this comes up with the other two contracts, I would prefer, or any contracts, prefer that it goes through the executive session, so we can go through the terms of these contracts, so then the Board would understand what it is, we can hash out this and not cause the stress that it causes for everybody involved, whether it's the employee or the members of this Board. So that's all I got to say on it. I don't know if anybody else has any questions on this particular contract. The hopes are is to resolve this, and then we can continue on our work, as we all try to do each day. Do you have anything, Tim?
Sort of motion, not really.
Well, I just want to just make sure the other two don't have anything, and then you can get into your motion if you don't have anything else to add to it.
I'm in full understanding of the situation.
So you're fine with it?
I'm okay with it.
Yeah, I've got no concerns with the contract.
If I want them, I'll send it back to you.
Matt, are we authorizing you to ratify, which it appears has already been...
It's already been signed.
So it works the opposite way, right? So this is unique to the Lieutenant's Contract and the Second-in-Command of the Fire Department's Contract. These are the only two contracts like this. Actually, I take that back. The Chiefs, by operation of state law, and then these two, by operation of local bylaw. The appointing authority makes the appointment, but it is subject to your ratification, your approval.
So with that, I'd make a motion that we ratify the contract for our Assistant Fire Chief, Kelly Manning.
Motion's been made. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
With that, Mr. Administrator, is there, how much time you got?
Well, I'm thinking I'd be comfortable taking 13 out of order, because then we could consolidate some time later.
Yep, go ahead. So we're going to talk about number 13, is discussion and votes on the employee health insurance rates for fiscal year '25.
Mr. Chairman, earlier this week, I circulated to you and to the Finance Committee the actuarial worksheet associated with calculating our rates. And without attempting to even pretend to be an actuary, because it takes many years of training to do that, what the progression of the numbers on the sheet show you is basically the actuary takes our claims experience for the last two years and isolates out those that were catastrophic, because they are unlikely to repeat, and then applies a market trend to what the number that's left over, and then puts back into that experience or forecast the portion of the catastrophic claims that were not covered by stop-loss insurance. It's just a way to protect the fund from running short. And long story short, there were two scenarios run, because the Board is at this critical nexus point. We, because we are not a fully insured entity, we are a self-insured entity, and we operate through a third-party administrator, so another professional outfit is actually administering our claims. We have full insight into what are referred to as pharmacy rebates. The major pharmacy companies pay customers, big customers, employers, or insurance companies, rebates on the cost of a drug that, for all intents and purposes, are rent. They want to be in your formulary. They want to be the drug of choice that you, as the insurer, push your claimants to use. And in exchange for that treatment in the formulary, there's a rebate that comes back. It's a substantial sum of money. So if anybody wonders if their pharma prices are inflated for all kinds of ridiculous reasons, this is one of them, which is the price isn't real, because they've already calculated what they need to make, and they have a price, and they give it back to you if they get what they want, which is basically shelf space in your store. The group has not been using those funds for anything other than savings. So we've built our surplus in some degree by not allocating those rebates back out to the individual towns that are a member of the group. It just became this, it's not really a common asset, but it just became a source of liquidity in our cash, in our checking account, because it's always there. It's not being spent for anything, but it is coming in. It is attributable to each individual town or school district that is a member of our group, because it is part of a claim. So if you come in and you say, "I'm sick, and I take drug X," and drug X has a rebate associated with it, we know that your claim came from a certain town, and we know that your claim is associated with that prescription, so it all can be traced back to the town. In the case of five years of history with Douglas, typically about 20% of our pharmacy cost comes back to us in the form of rebates. So we're lowering a very significant portion of our health claims by 20%. That yielded one rate, and then if we did not factor those rebates in, we got another rate. Now, what's interesting here is that when you take our catastrophic claims out, even though utilization of our plan is high, the average claim is small. So we actually end up with two negative numbers. The actuary recommends, or would tolerate, or would be comfortable with the Town of Douglas actually taking a small rate deduction, of either 3.9%, in the case of what the pharmacy rebates included, or negative 0.9%, just about negative 1%, if they're not included. Gene and I have had this conversation more than once over the last five years, because we have had negative rate recommendations come from the actuary before. That last year, the recommendation was a negative 5%. We don't go along with it. We don't recommend that anyone go along with it, because that creates ups and downs, and the employee is paying 20% of their insurance cost. So one year, you're giving them some of their paycheck back; the next year, you're taking it back. And it just becomes an uncomfortable way to manage employee relations. So the Board votes the rates of the individual towns. The only thing that will be before them is negative 3.9% or negative 0.9%, unless you take a position as a Select Board and ask for a zero, which is what Gene and I are recommending. This would be the third year in a row that our insurance rates for employees have not gone up, which is pretty extraordinary history. And over the course of the last, this is now our sixth renewal, we're at an average of 1.7%, which is well below the Prop. 2.5 threshold and way below inflation. So we're chuff-chuff-chuffing along in a really healthy way here. At some point in the next two or three weeks, two or three meetings of the Select Board, I'll be coming to you with a policy, because we have signed a joint purchase agreement that requires that if we have more than 10% surplus, we have to take that money out. The idea is, you can't get comfortable with rate passes every single year. You should be paying rates that reflect your claims. The extent that you've got a surplus, you should be doing something with it, bringing it back to the town. Gene and I agree, this is going to come back as almost like a general fund closure to free cash. We would want a policy to govern how those funds are allocated once it comes back to the town, with the notion that even though it isn't mathematically pure, philosophically, it's very compelling to say, employees contribute at 20%, they should get some form of 20% of our surplus back into their pockets, because they are the beneficiary. So that's what we're working on, is two things, right? OPEB, and the other is, how can we lawfully bring some of the money back to our employees without violating IRS rules around HSAs and other premium holiday-type conversations? So right now, I'm asking you to please support our recommendation to request that the MSHG Board give the Town of Douglas a rate pass this year or a 0% increase.
Does anybody have any questions for Town Administrator?
That was actually pretty good news.
Yeah, it's great. The 20%, Matt, what the dollar figure we're looking at?
So I'll have to look at where this will close us out this year, and what are pharmacy rebates that have accrued. So what is our share of that nest egg that was left there? I'm going to give you a range, because I feel most comfortable giving you a range. The Town of Douglas's current surplus in the MSHG Claims Trust Fund is somewhere between $1.4 million and $2 million. So if we took back, let's say we take back $1 million, that $200,000 that we would want to allocate back to employees, remember, this is the schools, too, we'd be looking, I'm trying to think of what the HSA, but that would almost be a couple of years' worth of the town picking up the entire 50% match of an HSA. This is by way of example only, but it is one, something I'm thinking very carefully about. We're allowed to do that under IRS rules, because the maximum's 4,100 employee employer contribution to an HSA. We'd be at, like, $3,000. What that means for our employees, though, is that their entire deductible would be covered by the HSA every year from the town. Right now, it's 50/50. That makes the benefit in this town very attractive, and I don't see it as a recruitment tool, I see it as a retention tool, because we can talk to our employees who are here already, you are getting a great deal. We are the only town anywhere that's at 20% premium co-share, and if we pick up the rest of their HSA, that's pretty spectacular. And it's limited, right? We can't have it become past practice. We'll have to sit down with all the unions and make sure they sign a piece of paper that says, "This will not be considered past practice for future reference." But I think it's good news for everybody. What we want to do is encourage people to do what this plan was set up to do, which is follow healthy habits, reduce the cost of the overall claims by following best practices for managing chronic conditions like diabetes, and going out and getting care, a second opinion, if you have a significant diagnosis, because we support all those things financially. And to the extent that people are using that, it's really benefiting the overall economics of the group. So it's a very positive loop that we're, we just want to keep it going.
Okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, we need Max.
I have a question. My parents get their healthcare. Should I refuse myself in this vote?
No, because the vote was fixed the entire class and not just you individually, so ethically you're not challenged here.
Just want to make sure.
Yeah, no, thank you.
So what you're looking for is a motion to approve the healthcare rates with a 0%?
To request...
To request?
That the MSHG Board of Directors give Douglas a 0% increase this year.
You want to go with that, Tim? Or you want to just say so moved? Yeah, there you go. Yeah?
It's a trick, I learned that one.
Motion's been made. Do I have a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? Seeing as none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks for that work, Matt.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, and to the Board through you. That's a very important step for us. I'll be back.
Yep.
With Gene, hopefully.
Just want to ask a quick question. Paul and Courtney, are you here for the BBT discussion?
We are here in case there are any questions about the Warren articles.
So the Warren articles, we're going to wait for Matt and Gene to come back for that. Unfortunately, we're sharing those two between the rooms. Okay, so we're, we need Matt for four, five, 12, and obviously 14. So we're going to go to number six, Douglas Historical Society Letter of Support for Grant. Anybody here for that? Would you like to come up? Hello.
Lisa Malzinski.
Is that your partner in crime that you want to come up with?
No. She's sitting this one out. Lisa Malzinski on behalf of the Douglas Historical Society tonight.
You want to explain what this is, or you want me to just read this letter?
This is a letter to the Massachusetts Historical Commission requesting that, or we're asking the Board to support our request to the Commission, application to the Commission for a matching grant to do another phase of repair in the barn that is part of the Ian Jenks Store Museum down at the corner of the street, Depot and Main Street. So this is just asking that the Board support that application.
This is a continuation of your restoration efforts that...
That's correct.
...that you have done?
Yep.
Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Malzinski?
I love to see that restoration in progress. Great piece of history.
I'd make a motion that we sign the letter of support for the Massachusetts Historic Commission's Round 30 grant application.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. We go too fast, we're going to be sitting here by ourselves waiting for Matt to come So the next item is number seven, Mass. Department of Fish and Game Letter of Support for Land Purchase and Possible Votes. Is anybody here for that?
Sue Perkins, 148 Wallon Lake Road.
So probably it'd make sense just to read this. This is from the Commonwealth, the Massachusetts Department of Fish and Game. Massachusetts Department of Fish and Game is considering the purchase of the fee interest in land located in the Town of Douglas. The letter is intended to serve as written notice of the Department of Fish and Game's interest in acquiring this property. The property is under consideration, contains 20 acres plus or minus of wildlife habitat. Enclosed in the, is a locust map, track number 2024-1-8. This depicts the property in which Douglas Department of Fish and Game is interested. The current use of the property is predominantly open space in its natural condition. If acquired, Department of Fish and Game, working through its Division of Fisheries and Wildlife, will retain the property as open space, protect and manage the wildlife resources, and provide public access for passive outdoor recreation opportunities, including wildlife observation, hunting, and trapping. It is the owner's desire to sell the land as in addition to Douglas Fishing Game, Douglas, keep signing it, Department of Fish and Game's Mine Brook Wildlife Management Area. Payment of the property taxes on Department of Fish and Game fee interest acquisitions. For Douglas Department of Fish and Game fee acquisitions completed from January 1st to June 30th, once acquired, Department of Fish and Game will pay the remaining real estate taxes on the property for the fiscal year. Full real estate tax bill on the property the following fiscal year. Department of Fish and Game fee acquisition completed from July 1st to December 30th, once acquired, Department of Fish and Game will pay the remaining real estate taxes on the property for the fiscal year. Well, there's a second page. I hope that the Select Board will consider providing a letter of support to the Department of Fish and Game's purchase of the property, a copy of which can be emailed to me, jamesgmacathie@mass.gov, with the original mail to Kristi Edwards, Director of Capital Planning and Land Protection, Department of Fish and Game, 100 Cambridge Street, Suite 620, Boston, Massachusetts, Please do not hesitate to contact me by email with any questions that may have. Address provided above. You may reach me by cell phone, which I'm not going to read a cell phone number. I would be happy to discuss this project further if there should be of any interest. James Macathie, Department... any interest. James McCarthy, Department of Fish and Game Land Agent. Do we have any questions on this?
No, just to reiterate, this is up near the Webster line on Route 16. It looks like a little landlocked piece.
You got that off this map?
No.
Anybody else have anything?
I think it's an acquisition for the fishing game.
An open space committee did.
Open Space Committee also gave us a lot, which I just came across. Dear Mr. Chairman, on behalf of the Douglas Open Space Committee, please be advised that on February 27, 2024 meeting, the committee voted to recommend that the Board of Selectmen fully support the efforts of the Commonwealth's Division of Fish and Game to acquire Mr. Bick's property found on Douglas Assessor's Map Parcel 154-3. The committee wishes to convey how fortunate we are that this property is being preserved. We also want to share that there's an existing trail that goes through the property and we urge that you also ask that the Department of Fish and Game protect the trail connection as detailed in our open space and recreation plan. Trails are critical to the town's outdoor recreation offerings and maintenance of the trails should be allowed to continue under their jurisdiction to keep the trail open and safe now and for the future. Sincerely, Susan Perkins, Chair, Douglas Open Space Committee.
So is there any reason to think that the trail that you mentioned in that letter does not already go through state property?
I'm not sure. It's, it probably originates, I think it's maybe originally the Bill and East Trail right at the line and it extends into that area.
Yeah, so it's contiguous and not going to not take care of that, so.
Right, it's
Yeah, the
As people use it, you know, it gets maintained in a way.
The pretty extensive trail system up there that's maintained regularly by different volunteers from different organizations.
So I mean, we could put in there contingent upon the maintenance of the trail, but the reality is that we probably don't have that authority to make that caveat, but it's quite likely that that is exactly why they are
The trail is there, yeah. The people that you meet and
With that, seems like, seems like a no brainer to me that I would make a motion that we endorse the Mass Department of Fish and Game purchasing parcel that I discussed tonight.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, sir.
Few acres.
More land.
The next thing we have is authorize the town administrator to sign the Similac Mutual Aid Agreement, Central Mass Law and Fosment Council, for those who want to know what Similac means. Lisa, this is a pretty standard agreement that we signed on the regular basis.
Chief, Leeana Coach told me that all the area chiefs as well
Yep.
are good with it. So, yeah, it's not the first time it's been signed.
Now we rely mutual aid, so I'll make a motion that we authorize the town administrator to sign the Similac Mutual Aid Agreement.
I will second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Just a request to fellow board members, let's take some of the burden off of Tim so he's not stuck making all the motions. So the next thing we have is the grant acceptances, number nine. If you don't object, Tim, I would like to give one to each one of these two members so they can go through that process. So Ross, why don't you take the first one?
Council on Aging?
Yes.
I will make a motion to accept the grant for the Council on Aging in the amount of 15,000.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The, which is, which is fine, just for the record, when you, when you do that, and sorry, I didn't say it to you. Just earmark grant award.
Earmark grant, yeah.
Just so we know. For our minute taker over there on the other side of the table, she knows where it came from.
That would all
Oh, that's Stephanie. Yes, yep.
I'll make a motion to approve the earmark grant award in the amount of 25,000 for the highway department for designing and building costs for new highway department.
Second that.
Oh, you got tricky. You skipped a page on us. No, I had some other one in here that I left a couple pages on that. Motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, all in favor?
Aye.
We're running out of things to drag up here, you know. So that brings us up to our meeting minutes. There's a tag on this one. Is there any reason why there was a
I was just separating.
Oh, okay. Yep. So we have the January 2nd and the January 18th. We'll start with the second. Give me a minute to read through it. Reading through this. Lisa, did you ever get that audio recording of that sidewalk from December 23rd?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
So at some point we'll get those.
No, you, those were
Did we do?
Yeah.
All right. Head injury.
I get it.
Dramatic, dramatic. I will make a motion to accept January 2nd, 2024 meeting minutes as printed.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we got January 18th. Hopefully Paul and Courtney know a little song or something. They can help us out with the
Is Matt needed for consecutive session?
Excuse me?
Is Matt needed for executive session?
Yes, because that's for, that's the post office property building. Just an update. It's probably a discussion around the, it's contract reading the whole time for that. Yeah, he was going to get in, get in the detail about that. We can talk about that if you want.
No, we don't have to. I just want to put a front general we can.
No, I know that. So, so on number 12, for, for a period of time, they were, might as well say what it is, discussion regarding Conservation Commission meeting minutes. So it's more of a general talk at this point because they've gotten caught up to where they were considerably behind in their meeting minutes for whatever reason. They are up to date as far as what has been given to them. They're still back in September or October, is it, Matt?
September.
But they're up to date on all their minutes?
The board is up to date on accepting the minutes they
That they've received. Yep, so.
They have two new sets for review on Monday.
Matt, who writes those? Do we have staff or is that a volunteer?
Stephanie Goff.
There's a, yes, yes, definitely.
Before we go too far, I'll make a motion to accept the January 18th minutes.
Oh, I thought we already did that.
No, we only did, we did the first one, didn't we?
Good thing the new guy's there.
Yeah. January 18th, 2024, as posted.
You got any? All right, so Ross has got a motion and he's got a second on that. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Hey, we're trying, trying to figure out how we're going to fill the slots. We didn't know we skipped over something. So anyways, the, the, that particular board is up to speed with it. The, there was quite the heavy load put on to the minute taker. They got caught up and she's rapidly getting caught up just another board that I'm on, our committee that I'm on Capitol, and she just sent me February 6 meeting minutes. So the Planning Board and Conservation as of late has been pretty drawn out, so they're pretty extensive meetings for them, for her to get caught up on. So Lisa has reached out to her to see if she needs any assistance on a temporary basis. She feels that she's going to be able to handle it without a problem, so Lisa's monitoring that to make sure that we get up to speed.
She does as well.
Yep.
She does a lot of the, she's Board of Health, FinCom, Capital.
Capital.
Almost everyone.
She's got a ton, so. So with that, so what Matt was going to talk about is what, what we're supposed to do on open meeting law requirements, right? And I think the state is 90 days, but we have our local, which is, I think, is a little tighter, probably 30 days, 30 days on that or the next available meeting, whichever happens first. So, and the other issue that came up is some members of different boards think that these are supposed to be transcripts, word for word for word, and that's created quite the bottleneck and pressure on the minute taker. And that's not what the, the intent is. It's supposed to be just an overview to tell you what, what happened at the meeting, who showed up, and what the, what the topic was in a very brief description of what went on. And then if you choose that you want more information out of it, then you watch that meeting. A lot of times it works that way, but for whatever reason, I think direction is given and the minute taker gets overwhelmed. She's, some of the meetings, it's taken like six hours to go through these.
Yeah.
There's just, there's just so much information on that.
A lot of tables involved, I can imagine.
Yeah.
So what the town administrator is trying to do is reel it back into where it's supposed to be, what the, what the regulation is, and make it easier for the minute taker so she's not so overwhelmed with it. So I'm sure he may have something else, but that's a, that's a general outline of what his thought process was on it. His, when it first came about, a little frustration because he realized that he was so far behind on the, on the conservation minutes, but they've rapidly caught up. There's been a little bit of reorganizational change in there and, and with Matt Benoit's efforts, they've getting it up to speed as to where they need it. I don't know if anybody has any questions on any of that stuff. I'm just trying to drag it out as far as I can so then I can use up some time. No, but that, that's the overall view of what, what it was. I'm sure Lisa and Matt will have a conversation if he chooses to add into it at a future meeting. He'll add into it, but that's the general overview of what his thoughts were. Yes.
Does it, if we learn the BBT post Warren articles, would it be worthwhile to have a conversation with our superintendent, Lisa, just to get his insight?
I would, no, be the, I went over this with the town administrator and it's important that he's involved in it. So I think it's a little more involved. I think it has to do with special stabilization accounts and, and things like that. So I'm sure that Paul could answer the question, but we're going to both stay out of trouble. Agreed, Paul?
Thank you, yes.
Yeah, no problem, no problem. Is there any open session topics not reasonably anticipated 48 hours in advance? Come on, Lisa, you can do something for me. Tim and I would like to jump to 17, but we can't do that just yet.
Right.
So number 11.
I have a brief question, maybe?
Yep.
Fall into 15. If anybody has the answer, but is there any update on the e-charges for the, for the vehicles? I know
Well, actually, yeah, I can help you with that. So if I talk really slow, I can judge that out. No, so it's before Capitol now. The, Matt reached out to the state. That was done under a grant program. We received $50,000 for a grant. It cost $56,000 to install it. The charger heads have been problematic from day one. They actually never got set up to be actually charging people for it. So they've been free since they've been put in, but they don't work, so you're really not giving away much. And it became such a problem. That's why we, at our last meeting, we amended the town administrator's contract because we're in default on part of our obligations. So anyways, he's reached out to a couple of different, he reached out to the state first because we're required to maintain those and keep them up and working. If you just went ahead and did it on your own, then they could come back and say, well, give me back my 50,000, right? So you have to go through that process, but they've been such a problem all across the state, this particular brand, that the state recognized that and they authorized us to change it. So the town administrator received two different quotes, one for 33,000 and one for 36,000. The $36,000 one is the better known of the two. That's, everybody seems to have a lot of confidence in it. And it's a pretty close cost of 33 or 36. So we, we actually voted on that today. We're going to put that on this, probably under the special town, special town meeting, right? We have that on the special? I believe so because it's, it's an ongoing, it's a repair. So we'll put it on the special so that way they can fix it right away. If we put it on the regular one, they have to wait until after July 1st and then the quote comes in, it's higher and all that nonsense. So where he has a very current quote at 36, we put it through at 38. And that's a typical practice with the Capitol Committee do, will ask Capitol Committee to, will ask the department when they come in, is it an actual quote that they have, or is it a, an estimated cost, right? Estimated's a little dangerous, because if you don't have enough in there, now you get, you're stuck. You can't get the job done because there's not enough money to fund it. And it has to wait until the next meeting in order to get more money on it. So we're going to put that through at $38,000, which will give them enough funds. So then after it's, after it's done and it's billed out and paid, then it goes back, let it go back to Jean, says the project's been closed out, and then she puts that in. It's called the carry forward, correct? I always get these things confused, so that's why I'm looking at Lisa for my support system. Carry forward account. So then we get to the town meeting. That's the first thing that she uses, all those closed out. So when we fund our capital projects, she'll use that funding source first before she goes to free cash, just to close out those accounts. Anything else you want to know about the charges? Will you call it a R? It's a good question. I'm sure somebody wants to know that answer. We didn't put nothing in the packet for the monthly goals or nothing, no?
Don't have any.
Yeah. No, no. So what I'm looking for, what I, so you understand what I was looking for, is just his, right? He had, he had the complete list. I showed all the departments.
Yes.
That's more, I, I feel that that's more for his use, for the departments.
I apologize. You asked for the town administrator piece.
Just the town administrator piece, because that, that falls under odds. It's kind of a little confusing, because if we start reading into that, my concern is, is, oh, well, so, so what's Tim doing today? He didn't do that. It was on my list. We're interfering with daily operations, and that's a, that's a no-go zone, so. I think for us, the best thing to have is just the town administrator's goals. I don't know how everybody else feels about that, but that's what my thought was on it.
Can we move it to the, the 26th meeting then, since I didn't make-
No, I want it on each, each one, so it was just in front of it.
Oh, I thought you wanted it monthly, once a month.
Well, once a month, that's fine. Yep. So why don't we just set it for the second meeting of each month?
Yeah, that's what I was-
And then just leave it at that, so then we know what to expect, and I'll forget next meeting and ask you the same question.
I won't forget.
As long as you don't put it on the list, I won't ask you. So I have to talk about the highway. It's on our list, on the granting, so I guess it's, I didn't anticipate talking about it 48 hours ago anyway, so. Where we stand with that now is Weston and Sampson hasn't met their design milestone that we had hoped that they would, so it's going to take a little bit more time for them to do that. We need an accurate, accurate guesstimate and set of plans in order to move forward with it. We're in the process now. There's a, an appraisal being done on a piece of property that we have interest in, and we're waiting for that to come back. The hopes is that it, it was going to come back for spring town meeting, but I don't know. I've been a squeaky wheel about it, but I guess I'm not squeaking enough. I'll have to wipe the rest of the grease off and make it screech. Well, I guess I'll at least acknowledge the, the support of the members of the board. Kevin's gesture was nice to say what he said when he left, but I felt that it was more important for us as a board to come together and make that decision versus somebody that's not here making a decision and leaving. As I always do, I try to do the best I can, do what's in the best interest of the town. If anybody's got any concerns or comments or complaints about anything that I do, I would welcome it at any time. For you, Max, while you're, Ross nominated you into that seat, whatever you need for help to try to get you up to speed. I didn't think of it when I got up. I should have told you what you're going to do is you're going to open up the floor and ask questions to the other ones. I realize when I got over there, I kind of set you up a little bit, and it wasn't intentional, it was just an oversight. But as you move forward, any help that you need, reach out to myself, reach out to Tim. Tim, Tim is very experienced in this, and he has a wealth of knowledge as to how the process goes. I'm sure that he would be happy to give you some guidance if you needed it.
Anytime. Ross, too. Can we talk about the request from the school?
Request, where is that one?
Warrant article.
Warrant article on $200,000.
Oh, on, on number four? No, Matt wanted to be here for that, and that's what Paul and I just dodged a bullet from somebody else, so. Okay, so what I didn't do, and we can just revisit it, because the information is here under number 12, your, your supporting documents actually in your, your packet. And that refers to chapter 38, commonly referred to as the open meeting law. Because the problem that, the challenge that, or problem, challenge, however we want to word it, that we'll face is if at any time somebody comes in and approaches the town and they request such meeting minutes, we have 10 days to produce them. So that's why it's very important to put it up. If we don't meet the timeline, we have to at least put our draft out there. You know, I said that the first time around.
Yeah, I think that would be important if we didn't have a crack cable access operation.
Yeah, under the 48-hour rule, it would be appropriate to give props to the man behind the curtain, Pat.
Thank you, Governor.
Which, as another capital item, Pat is seeking the support to get a new console for his cable operation over there, where that one's a little antiquated and way behind where he's having trouble trying to, he's actually challenged now with the immediate public access. We're not live. It's been a problem for a little bit. The funds do not come out of free cash. It comes out of his cable account.
I think we're, we're live on the same channel. We always are, but Charter's putting the education channel on this channel now, so. But I just pushed it through on the regular one, so we're live.
Nice.
Yeah.
Just in time to watch Dead Air.
I love that show. Oh.
So for everybody watching, that was Pat in our cable department that has exposed us for having run out of things to talk about while we wait for the town administrator to come back from the finance committee meeting.
We play like elevated music or something?
No, we could recess.
Well, yep. Why don't we take a short recess, and we'll reconvene in, I want to say 15 minutes?
Well, say five minutes.
Five minutes. And if we're not back in five, it may be 10.
In our turn, it might be 15.
Okay, we're, we're back again from our little recess. So we going to, you're going to talk about the BBT?
I'd like to see where you are. If you have a, are you on the warrant?
No, we didn't get there. So you, you have a choice of warrant or BBT. Which one would you like? You have a, you have a very excited audience in this room that would gladly accept any one or both.
So the BBT is on the warrant as a placeholder to be considered by the board, is my understanding. Dr. Fitzpatrick presented to the finance committee. You can go back to that tape. It was February 27th, after the Douglas Public Schools. He presented three articles. One was his budget, the second was setting up a stabilization, and the third was a vote to put the roof and rooftop HBA C8 units. The way it was presented to the finance committee was, was within the debt, within the levy. I did question him on that. He said it was up to the towns to make that individual decision about whether or not they wanted debt excluded, which is what I would recommend to the town of Douglas. We can't absorb their project within our levy limit, because now you're taking, it would be a fixed cost, and you'd be taking away from other departments. It does require two votes. It would require a town meeting as well as a ballot, but I think that's important for a $10 million project.
The timing of that is we're going to have to have a special election?
Well, it would be, you know, it's, I don't know, have you been notified from Dr. Fitzpatrick? I don't know where he-
I haven't seen anything as of yet.
Yeah, where he is in the process. He presented this to the finance committee with his presentation. I don't know where he is with other communities or when they're going to vote on it. He was, and I don't, you know, I kind of agree with him as, as timing-wise, because we have some debt rolling off in 2025. He, he's looking to have it come out in 2026, which is, be what I do, right? You have debt rolling off, you're going to backfill with the next project. The problem I had, one, is two things. One, you need to educate people as to why you need it. It's a $10 million project. You're, you're responsible to 13 communities. You don't just bring it to a finance committee and say, here you go. And the second, that he presented only the language to have it within the levy and not both. And I understand it's up to the town, but, you know, you present both things so that the town can make an informed decision. So those are the two issues that I have. I don't know where he stands with the other communities. I don't know where they stand. Some communities have their town meetings earlier than we do. So I would probably ask that the town administrator reach out to his colleagues and see where they are in the process, and whether or not they're going to include it as part of this town meeting or wait until next town meeting.
What you say, debt's rolling off, it's BBT debt?
Yeah, so they did, their bond is rolling off in 2025. So there's $34,000 in this, this budget coming up, and then that is done. So again, I don't criticize the fact that ones, you know, that's what you do. You, you time them so when one leaves, it's kind of like that leveling it off. And they are, you know, he, he is very good at going after grants, so I'm sure he'll, you know, try to, you know, go to the school building authority, so I have no doubt that he's going to do that. But again, it's, it's, it's more in the manner in which it's presented. And I, and again, any project of that size, you want to make sure you're educating the taxpayer and who's going to be voting on the project.
At what point do we need to vote on this? Does it have to be tonight, or is there more time to it? Because-
I'm going to let Lisa answer that question, because it is, we put it on, it's a placeholder on this warrant.
Yeah.
It's strictly a placeholder. The board has not voted as to what articles are going to be included. I don't have the calendar with me, so I can't answer that question. You know, I know next week, we have two more big weeks. Next week is the, again, you guys are meeting at the same time as the finance committee. Capitol's presenting. We have water sewer and probably community development at their meeting. And then April 9th is the public hearing, and that, that is it. At that point- At that point, the Finance Committee is making their recommendations and we're going to the printer within that week. So we're really up against that wall.
We'll wait and see what Lisa says, but it's probably the 26th is the last shot.
Definitely no later than that.
No, I know that.
Yeah, I don't know what she has on the schedule for you.
So they made another meeting in March?
No, we have one in March, the 26th.
Oh, look at that.
I don't know if the time change or whatever, but I've been all messed up. I kept losing a whole week.
Leap year, leap month. Time change.
No, shouldn't we be meeting the 19th?
No, because of the election, we switched this month because the primary was on the 5th.
Somebody went second and fourth this week.
Correct. Correct, yeah. Just so they weren't two weeks in a row.
Long as we're still here after the solar eclipse happens.
And the only reason I ask that is I think Matt has some other thoughts on that, maybe anything. So I just want to make sure that we hear everything that's to be said, so we don't just vote it. And then it's too late.
Must have been a time change. Got me too.
Yeah, I think it would be important to know where the other communities stand as well.
Correct. Anybody have any questions for Jean on that stuff?
Yeah. So specifically with this, is it, they're just trying to get debt authorized by the 13 towns, so we have a yes or no? Or is it basically they're doing the roof repairs no matter what?
No, this, well, they have to get it approved because they can't absorb $10 million within their operating budget, in my opinion. So their, again, their first recommending, or their suggested language was that we have a special article, no different than any of our special articles, where you're just voting that one project, and then we would pay the debt within our operating budget. I did not agree with that manner. I went to our financial advisor and I said, okay, I want language for debt exclusion because I don't think we should be absorbing this. You know, we're part of a group, so I guess if nine of the 13 towns approve it, we may be, you know, going back. But again, it's, it's really, you know, at the town administrative level and town manager level to see where those other communities are and what their thoughts are. You know, I'm a resident of Uxbridge. I would want a debt excluded in Uxbridge for the same reasons here.
Yeah.
You know, because you're fighting for the same money. And it's a $10 million project. You know, it should be debt excluded.
And once you get to the, near the end of the life of the roof, you're in limited time. It's not something you can say, oh, no, we're not going to do it. Because sooner or later, it has to be, one way or another, it has to be fixed.
Right, you have ownership to the building. You know, you have to take care of your assets, you know, whether it's here or...
It's an agreed upon partnership that we signed into. So the question that I asked Jean was on the BBT thing. We have until next meeting before we vote on that, because I would like to have some input from Matt on that.
Technically, the warrant's not closing until your next meeting.
Yep, just want to make sure that is.
I wasn't, I wasn't sure of the date, so I wanted to make sure. Yes, March 2nd.
Are you going to tackle the annual and the special town meeting warrant stuff?
I can tackle the special if I have a copy. Did you bring your... I didn't, I was coming over, so I don't have one. I am going to stress that this is still in draft mode and still fluid. We are meeting with departments, but this is where we are as of 6 o'clock tonight. Ready, Mr. Chair?
Yes. Go ahead, Jean.
So Article 1, that is a typical housekeeping item that we have on almost every special now, both the November and the May town meetings. We look at departments and where they are as of this date. We try to address all budgetary needs through the town meeting. And if there's anything outside of this, then we would go to the Finance Committee for reserve fund transfer. But again, we like to get things in front of the voter. So these are the items that we've addressed. You'll see some with X's right now. I've identified them of having meeting some budgetary adjustment, but we're just, we're working through that with the departments at this time. So that is a standard housekeeping item. Article 2, the town administrator has approved $75,000. I'm not going to mention where we, right now, we have not used it, but I'm not going to speak anymore about it. Don't want to cause the snow to stop falling.
I need one more snow day. I need a foot.
Eight, nineteen.
I need two days on the mountain, that's it. Just two.
Two days on the mountain.
If this is not needed, it would be passed over. Article 3 is the prior bills. Again, you know, this has been a little more challenging over the last two, three years because of COVID. We have find, I have found that more vendors are actually working remotely. And it's just different. You know, where, you know, where they're not, we're getting bills in later past time frame. And if I was working for another company or, you know, I would just pay the bill. What the town is, if we have not encumbered, if we have not set the money aside, if we did not know about it and it came in after, then we have to go to town meeting. So these are the bills we have identified as being a prior bill, which with a budget of 30 something million, I guess I shouldn't be upset, but we work really hard to not have this. And, you know, we work with the departments, but sometimes, you know, through circumstances beyond our control, they don't, if they date the invoice in July, they're not looking at the fact that service was in May. But when it comes to me, I'm like, ah, you can't, it was last year. And it may, you know, so they didn't think it was a prior year bill, but because of the date of service was in the prior fiscal year, I cannot use this year's funds to pay last year's bill. So there are a couple that we have to address. Article 4, the state has allowed us to set receipts reserve for appropriation up for opioid money for the settlement. Last year, that money, the law didn't exist last year, so the money closed into free cash. This year, we're just taking it from free cash and putting it in the receipts reserve for appropriation until it's used. It cannot be used for anything other than that. Article 5, I could actually let Mike speak to it if he wants to. That's the items that we have addressed for some of the capital needs. These are for capital projects that were budgeted in either this fiscal year or last fiscal year, that we just didn't have the funds available to complete the project after we went out to bid. But if Mike wants to. I'll speak with the first one, the first one's roadway paving. That's because...
I was just, I got hung up on the highway dump truck. I was having flashbacks to a meeting earlier, but I, I think I have that number confused with a different piece of equipment.
This is not in the format it's going to be in. These are just my notes.
Nope, no, that's fine.
So if you want to speak to this one, you can.
So the roadway paving repaired, because you don't have anything else with the notes. Was that an add-on to the parking lot paving?
No, that one is because Bob and Eric is using some of the Chapter 90 money.
For Northeast Main Street?
Yeah, so we're replacing the general fund with the money that would have been coming out of Chapter 90.
Yep.
So because he's using up the project, we're giving Adam back the money in a different vehicle.
Yep, so the EV charging stations, obviously, we already went over that. I explained how we get to that point. The post office parking, we had appropriated $90,000, but we're about $50,000 short. So that'll bring up that total cost of $140,000, the highway department. Dump truck with the plow, we're removing the word international. Moving forward with the, through the capital process, there will no longer be any branding names on it. Because we put that name on there, Adam was restricted, or the highway superintendent was restricted to going after an international truck. He can't get them. A year and a half, I think, is what he was told for a truck for lead time, if it comes in. He did reach out to Mack Truck, and he was told that they won't even sell them until they have them, and they're not coming in until the fall. So it's, you better be ready for it and try to jump in the line. They won't take any reserves or anything. So he's got the challenge on trying to replace his equipment. The school security system, what we're doing with that and capital. We've switched some things around the, if you recall, we appropriate, or encumbered, as Matt corrected me. The 200 and, was it 25,000 or 75,000 from Opera Funds? Do you remember?
225, I believe.
225 from Opera Funds. The project, like every other thing that we've been looking at over the last year or so, is greatly inflated from where we thought it would be. So to, for the success of the project, we're going to move the entire 140 that was in our capital plan for the replacement of one of the oil...
Don't worry about it, it's good. I'll get it.
Oil tanks, well, I just didn't want it to open up, and it goes on you barefoot and you're jumping around the room. So to ensure the, the ability to complete the project for the school, we're going to increase, and so a total increase of 365,000. There also is a possibility that if for some reason something goes awry again, then it'll be done in phases per campus. And that's all I have on number 5 for capital.
Municipal Center oil spill, that is for the, the oil spill. We have previously approved 265,000. We received an invoice here for 28,000 today. There's only 38,000 in the account, and the project is not completed. I am waiting for a number from Adam to fill in, to see what we're going to need.
So that's all in, 500?
Well, that's in addition to the, yeah, the insurance.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For 330 gallons of oil. So that's the importance of why the school department needs to get those two tanks changed. So the, they've been challenged with trying to secure somebody to address the tank that they've already had the money appropriated for. And because they're, they're running to a lot of resistance or cooperation in trying to get to the point where they need to be, the school security system is extremely important. And it was a combined agreement between Courtney Paul from the school and the Capitol Committee to do that, as well as the town administrator.
And the last article was just presented to us today. We are still waiting for some language, but this has to be a supplement to the North Street project.
North Street from Gilboa to Main Street, or North Street the other way? No idea.
This is, let me just put it, this is after the Opera Funds, and the $100,000 was voted at the town meeting.
That was for a grant that I was getting, so they're probably, okay.
Mr. Ben Eric?
I believe that's on the other side, the end of my own question.
Again, this was presented to us very late in the, today. So that was the placeholder, was really just added.
See, we lost them again. He left his book, so that's a good sign.
What's that?
Do you want to...
On the annual?
Because we, we, he just asked...
But a lot of the articles haven't been discussed yet. I can only speak, I can go quickly through the first six. And...
It's okay.
Item number 17, the school department is here to, if they wanted to, if you want to take them out of order.
Yep, so why don't we do your first six? We'll see if Matt comes back. I would like him part of that discussion.
So 1, 2, and 3 are really easy, because that is your six-page document. The, the budget, was that presented this evening? Not yet. That will be inserted here. Article 3 is the election. Anybody elected has to be put in its own charge, so the town meeting votes on that separately. But they are embedded in the budget, in the, in the six-page document. Item number 4 is the BBT assessment. That's the number we get straight from Dr. Fitzpatrick. You'll see in that, 34,211 is their debt for this year for FY '25. Again, that is scheduled to roll off for '26, which is why they're trying to put that other article in. 5, 6, and 7, those are the transfer station, water sewer enterprise, and the cable receipts reserve. So those funds come outside of the operating budget. So the transfer station and water sewer enterprise funds, so the money comes from users and rate users. And the cable, we actually receive money from charter, and that's receipts reserve for appropriation accounts. So the money gets deposited into that account, and then we transfer out what we need to operate for the next fiscal year. Article 8, that's reoccurring business, that's housekeeping. You'll see that on every town meeting. Article 9 is the personal compensation chart. So that's how, once that chart gets inserted, that's how we determine how our employees are paid and what step and grade they are. Again, we're waiting for that. Article 10, Capitals still working. They're scheduled to meet next Tuesday, and the chair is scheduled to meet in front of the Finance Committee on March 26th at 6:30, if you'd like to attend. And I think I'm going to stop there.
Okay, so another, I was just reading through the list, and I noticed that we have three different, or at least two people, I don't know, it may be three, that could speak on the number 12, which is the amendment to the general bylaw. Article 8, wetlands bylaw, section 13, citizens petition. Is anybody here that wants us, could you come up, please?
Hello again, Lisa Mozinski, 60 Oak Street. I submitted this petition because through recent events, dealing with Conservation Commission and wetlands violations, we discovered that the town of Douglas's Conservation Commission can only give a $200 fine per day or per incident to a violation, a violator. And the state allows up to $300 a day. So this is language that basically brings the town up to speed on being able to fine a developer or anyone actually in violation with wetlands.
So other than increasing the monetary value of the fine from 200 to 300, is there any other changes within this bylaw?
So if you see, I think you have it on the backside, is the current bylaw language? And so there is language that expresses more parameters and in-depth, but this is also suggested from the Massachusetts Conservation Commission's language that they promote around the state. It basically updates it from 30 years ago plus.
Russ, did you say you seen something in there about access to property? You asked me, for the sake of transparency, he called and asked me about this question the other day, and I may have misguided him, so, because I've gotten some other information since then.
Just like scan through this real quick to see if it's the same exact thing I was reading or... What I saw, what I saw, or what I interpreted was that the conservation has, can come on the property at any time. My question was, is there supposed to be any sort, for the landowner, is there supposed to be any sort of prior notice? Or is it as this project is, a project is going on, or if they see something? Do they have the right just to go on the property, or does the land... Or does the landowner need notification that we're coming? That was the question. I don't, I don't really see it here at the moment, but.
So I think it's common practice to try to give the landowner notification, but I'm not the conservation agent or.
So I did ask the conservation agent, because I had the opportunity to meet him on something else. And so while I was there, I asked the question that Russ had asked me about. And people, you got to be careful of the people's constitutional rights. So you don't have the right to just access the property. They would have to be notified because we would be in violation of the constitutional rights, kind of overrides a lot of things. So I don't know where that's in here. So the, so the.
Second paragraph. The Conservation Commission, its agents, officers, and employees shall have the authority to enter upon privately owned land for the purpose of performing their duties under this bylaw. But my question was whether it's a construction project or, or a private property, do they actually have the right to just come on the property?
From what the conservation agent told me, he doesn't. Matt, can you speak on this at all?
I'm not 100% sure, so I don't want.
Okay. No, that's fine.
Question to avoid any potential.
Can you explore that before our next meeting?
I should do that right now.
Okay.
But it's also shall. So in some respects, it gives them the ability to do it if it's, if it's, if it's necessary.
Right. I'm just looking at the wording. Like if there's, if there's an ongoing issue and say the landowner knows, okay, they can show up at any time, then that's notification, whether it's taken a month or two months or two weeks or whatever.
Yeah.
He knows that, or they know that the possibility of them showing up is, is there.
Lisa, are you the proponent for this bylaw?
Yes.
So did you copy this from somewhere or is this out of our town bylaw?
No. The piece on the back is the current bylaw language.
The piece on the back. Okay. So I tried to follow you last time, so.
Ours is, it's on the bottom.
Oh, at the bottom.
Oh, current bylaw.
Current bylaw. Right. And so then this is the bylaw that's basically suggested by the Massachusetts Association of Conservation Commissions.
Okay.
This is their boilerplate to suggest what is current language, legal language for.
So when Mr. Benoit comes back, what I would do is, is ask him to run this by land council to make sure that we're, we're compliant.
I'd appreciate it.
So we don't, we don't have any issues. I think that would be the safest thing for us to do. I would hate to vote on something that's in violation of anybody's rights.
No, I'd appreciate that.
Do you mind repeating the question?
Okay. So Matt, so while you were gone, this is cut and pasted out of the Massachusetts?
Right.
Wetland bylaws?
Right. And the Conservation Commission.
And the Conservation Commission. On the bottom of the page has our current thing. Could you, I don't know if you have a copy of this and I can give you this as other matter or Lisa can get it to you, run it by land council to make sure that we're compliant and we're not violating anybody's rights by this, so we don't get the town meeting and it's challenged. It makes sense, from my own personal standpoint, it makes sense to increase the value to the fine, the $300 a day in light of the issues that we've had with some of these larger developers. It, it's not going to, it doesn't really affect them tremendously. It's just something to, to get their attention. So we're regulated to be only at $300. One of the projects in town, the neighboring town did $300 a day for 90 days, and they would have $27,000 in an account to address their costs for administration and, and peer review and things like that. So I'm assuming that's what your goal is, is to try to increase the dollar amount so then we as a town, we're not bearing the cost on these projects.
That's correct. And, and also our senator and representative are looking at the possibility of a more, a graduated fine structure at the state level because all the towns are basically constricted by this very small amount of fine.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Okay. Does anybody else have questions for Lisa on this wetland bylaw proposal with the citizen's petition?
Maybe just format. Ultimately, this is a piece of legislation and we're copying the current signed by, current.
Signed by law. You had, you had a flashback.
I did. But I wonder if, do we present this in strike through and underline the format?
Yeah, run that by council.
Like, yeah.
Typically means.
Just so people know.
Either strike through or we remove the entire, there's usually some language in there, so they know whether or not it fully replaces it or if it's integrated somehow.
Yep.
That's just something to.
So Matt, instead of you running it through land council, Lisa will just run it to Rich and get clarification on the wording to make sure that we're not violating anybody's rights in there and then how it should be formatted.
Assuming that our predecessors asked the same question, I don't think we will be because that portion appears to be unchanged. But good to check.
Anybody else have any more questions for Lisa? No? Ross? You good?
Yeah, good. So just process-wise, then, will you review this again or vote on it at the next meeting?
Yeah, we're not going, we're going to wait and we'll go through it at our last meeting to vote on. I don't think we need to pull out individual stuff at this particular meeting.
Okay.
I would rather have the information from town council before we actually voted on this particular one.
Right.
Yep. So at the next meeting, because we have to close the warrant.
Yep.
To March 26th meeting.
Twenty-sixth.
It may, it may fall under the, where the end of that, to subject to the constitutions and laws of the United States and the Commonwealth. It may be, may fall under that, but I would like to know that. That's all.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thanks, Lisa.
You're welcome.
Okay. So before I screwed up my paperwork, what happened to the? Matt, did it come back yet? He must have went back into the finance committee?
I believe so, yes. That's Article eight. That's a standard housekeeping.
You already talked about that one. Number 10, the adoption of the revised fiscal year 25 through 29 capital improvement budget. You won't have that until the next meeting. Matt, oh, where'd he go now? Finally found something we had somebody to talk on. He's gone.
He is. Three. School's here. In school?
What?
Seventeen.
No, seventeen. I, I want Matt part of it, so.
Okay, then I'll go over.
That's for the, an overall study of their buildings. Certified. If you see Matt Benoit, can you send him back?
Fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen are his.
Right.
And I believe it says others on Zoom. I'm sorry, yes. Well, thirteen was, you approved that to go back to planning and on the warrant last meeting.
Mm-hmm. But you can give us an update on it.
Okay.
I'm trying to kill time here. He's going to do something. He's got all kinds of stuff over there. Oh, he, he's got electronic devices, got everything going on. Transfer of land ownership, Caswell Court. You got thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen, I think.
Which one is number thirteen?
Number thirteen is the amend the zoning bylaw, section 6.8 solar bylaw. Just give us an update as to where you stand. We've talked about that at a previous meeting.
Yeah, the planning board is holding a public hearing tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night.
At that point, they'll make a recommendation to this, to this board.
So we'll have that back on the 26th?
Yes.
Okay. Next one is transfer of land ownership, map parcel 118-2, Caswell Court.
All right. So with your permission, I'd like to share my screen.
For the minute taker, that voice that we'll hear in the background is Matt Benoit, Community Development Director.
So.
Is that Bill? Flynn Bill Development?
I'll try to speak as loud as I can.
Thanks for putting that in. I forgot all about it.
But the, the Open Space Committee has recommended the transfer of ownership of Matthew Parcel 118-2 from the town of Douglas to the Douglas Conservation Commission. This is a parcel. Thank you.
Thank you. This, this is a parcel that is, that has been identified in our 1998 master plan as a parcel looking to be preserved under conservation. And the town recently took ownership of it through tax title and that period has lapsed for the appeal. So we have the ability to transfer this to the, to the Conservation Commission by town meeting vote. Happy to answer any questions. This is the parcel here. One of the, it is a landlocked parcel, but it is possible that through the future application of a Caswell Court potential subdivision, that we might be able to gain access to this parcel. There's a pending application with Conservation Commission for Anrad flagging. Now, we don't know what the application's going to be yet, if it's going to be housing or anything, we're not sure. But it could be a condition to add access to this lot for, for recreational use in the future. So I think this would be a great opportunity for this select board to transfer this to Conservation.
Somebody have any questions for Mr. Benoit?
Just roughly, what's the size of the parcel?
The parcel is forty-seven, forty-seven point two nine acres.
I can't believe it, but it's not 48.
You good with that?
Oh, yeah. Yep. I'm fine with that.
You have any questions for him? Nobody has any questions on that. I'm assuming that we're going to vote on all these things come the 26th meeting. It's just an overview of what we have on our list. Number 15, revised stormwater management bylaw and regulations.
Mr. Chairman, Matt Benoit, Director of Community Development, again. We have a draft stormwater management regulation general bylaw before you this evening. This is a general bylaw. And I also have Nick Christofory from CEI, who was on the Zoom, who's able to answer any questions you may have about the stormwater bylaw. This is a MS4 regulated permit process in which we're supposed to be updating our general bylaws to add a stormwater management bylaw. And what you have in your packet, I believe, are two items. There's stormwater management rules and regulations for the Conservation Commission. That's for them to adopt after town meeting where to adopt the Article 12 proposal to the stormwater bylaw. Nick Christofory is on Zoom and Nick, if you could introduce the process to the select board, I would appreciate it.
Thanks for having me on. I'm Nick, Nick Christofory with Comprehensive Environmental CEI. I've been working with the town now for about five years or so on, on various stormwater related issues. So without getting into too much detail, because I know you've got a pretty full agenda already. So the way this typically works is communities, in order to meet these, these mandatory requirements from EPA, will adopt a ordinance or a bylaw via town meeting. And the idea with the ordinance and bylaw is that it is fairly basic and straightforward. It has things like enforcement and definitions and a paragraph that allows for adoption of accompanying regulations. And the idea is that once the ordinance is adopted at the town level, that piece is essentially done. And then sort of all the details and all of the other components are contained in the regulations. And the way the regulations typically are done is they can be adopted by planning board or a similar board at a routine monthly meeting. So the idea is that if there are any changes or updates that need to get made, it's a lot easier to go with this process in that you just then have to go formally notice that you're going to be looking at these regulations during the meeting and then you can make changes as needed at a typical planning board meeting. And what I mean by that is, this is why we're looking at having two documents rather than just a single bylaw. So, so that being said, I'd like to hear any questions because I think there may be some history on this with the town previously.
What do you mean history on this?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, there was, there was an attempt to get a stormwater bylaw passed by this board, I believe it was 2018, and it did not pass, it did not get to town meeting floor because the Board of Suckin' Board did not support it.
Was there anything in the notes as to why?
I did not check the minutes.
Yeah. Do you recall any of that?
Matt, I thought this had gone way, way before, like 10 years ago. I thought this went before the voters.
Yeah, in 2010, there was a fairly aggressive stormwater plan. I don't know, this doesn't appear to be that, but the townspeople rejected that based on the reach that the town was looking to codify.
I believe the general bylaw hit this board in 2016. I think this was the year I was looking on. And it has since been reworked to make the Conservation Commission the permanent authority.
Is this something unique to this town, this particular bylaw, the wording, or is this something that you're using in other towns?
Now, this is pretty standard at this point. I mean, a lot of these requirements actually have been around since the, the permit was previously released back in 2003. So there was actually a requirement to have a bylaw and an ordinance and regulations in place back in 2008. And then since then, an updated version of the permit has come out, so now there's this sort of new requirements. So the town currently doesn't have any requirements in place. What we're looking at doing is getting the town up to where it should be to meet these EPA requirements. And we have been seeing, so this is a management requirement. Like I said, it's been required to be in place for some time now. And I have, within the last six months or so, seen EPA reaching out to communities that don't have these regulations in place, and they are starting to ask them about it. And in some cases, they're actually starting to hand out consent orders to communities that don't have these regulations in place. So, you know, I just, I just want to let the board know that we are seeing this, this is on EPA's radar.
Have you been involved in the presentation at any other towns with this?
Yeah. Yeah, I've, I've done many of these meetings before and, and this is like, this is the very, very high-level presentation and I've done all the way down to work in. And I've done all the way down to working sessions within communities and public outreach, education, public outreach and education presentations, and so on and so forth.
Is there any general concerns that usually pop out of the audience when you present this?
Well, every community is different.
I get that.
I will say, I will say that probably eighty to ninety percent of my communities, there is no pushback at all. In general, it's protecting the environment. Obviously, there's the other side of the coin, too, that there is an additional cost to, this will have an additional cost on some development. So as a result of this bylaw, essentially, any project that is disturbing an acre or more will have to meet certain requirements, and that they will have to treat stormwater and do erosion and sediment controls during construction. So just the important thing to note, it's only if you are disturbing an acre. So it doesn't matter if your parcel is an acre or more, and you're just putting in a deck or a swimming pool. It's only if you're disturbing an acre. So these are gonna be subdivisions, and these are gonna be larger commercial developments, and so on and so forth. So that's kind of the flip side of the plan.
Well, in this town, we also have Village Residential, which is only a twenty thousand square foot lot. And we have some other sections of town that you would be under an acre of land that have been problematic for stormwater runoff on the west side of town. So this, those wouldn't be included in this bylaw? How do we capture those?
Well, those would not be included in this bylaw. The way we worded it is EPA only mandates you regulate development of an acre or more. So some communities, not too many, have opted to regulate smaller developments. But, you know, just keep in mind, you're then gonna be pulling in more development and more, more, more projects than you otherwise would be. Some communities have opted instead to go with like a tiered approach. So you kind of have EPA's one-acre threshold where you have to do all these different requirements. And then maybe you have another smaller threshold, like say fifteen thousand square feet or twenty thousand square feet, that would trigger stormwater mandates and stormwater control requirements, but not necessarily to the same level as regulated by EPA. And I guess I would, I guess what my suggestion would be is let's get this one-acre threshold in place, and then we could look at regulating those smaller ones. I just, I'd like to get this one-acre thing in place. That way you're covered in case EPA starts asking.
No, I get that, and I'm not trying to complicate it, only because I'm on another land use board, so I'm exposed to it is what makes me think about it. So we have a section of town that has five and ten thousand square foot lots. Being so close, it's challenging to try to manage your water on site. But it has to be done, because the administration office, sometimes during the rainstorms, their phone may ring frequently. So it's been your experience to try to pass through this larger one first and then try to tighten it up afterwards?
Most communities, honestly, they don't want to even bother with the smaller ones. I only have probably two communities I can think of out of, say, twenty that are looking at regulating smaller, smaller developments.
Yeah, I'm trying to be unique to the Town of Douglas. I'm not trying to be rude, but the other communities aren't having the problems that we're having. So I just want to make sure that we're thinking about that, that's all.
Sure. Yeah, yeah, it's certainly something we could think of. I mean, I've really just been going at it from the EPA, that one-acre threshold. Matt and I could talk a little bit more about, you know, does it trigger, like, do those smaller ones? What did, like, what would those smaller development projects trigger now? Like, would they trigger site, site plan review?
No site plan review. These are residential parcels, single-family homes. Some of them, the current home on it, probably twenty-four by thirty-two in size. We have had applicants that come through, get permission to go all the way up to ten feet to their property lines. That's a problem, right? So Matt's familiar with what I'm talking about. They can get into detail what the section of town is. It's something that you may want to consider looking into for this bylaw to see if it's something that you could potentially put in, in there. If you can't, you can't, but I would like to at least think about it.
Sure, yeah, Matt, you and I can talk after.
No rush, you got until next week. No, two weeks.
Thank, plenty of time, thank you.
Plenty of time. Does anybody else have any questions for this guy?
No questions, Mr. Chairman, just a comment.
No, no question.
We've had any number of incidents in town involving stormwater, running off onto other people's property, running down the street. And we don't have a vehicle to address that in many cases. So we try to cobble together a response based on Concom's jurisdiction over protected wetland resources, the zoning code's environmental standards, which are rather loosely written, but they're, they're based on nuisance doctrine. Whether or not the things that come off your property cause someone to lose the quiet enjoyment of theirs or damage it, and the highway commissioner's authority to prevent people from dumping water on the roads of the street, on the roads of the town, sorry. Those are very vague guideposts towards trying to get to a solution for what are you gonna build and to what standard and what is actually gonna be allowed. The core of this bylaw is a policy statement that you will cause no net change in the amount of water that comes off your property. So it doesn't mean that you stop all the water from coming off, it's that you make no net change. And where it was going before, it still needs to go, and if the rest needs to stay, you can't increase the volume of stormwater that runs off your project if it's greater than an acre. It would close this area of uncertainty for our regulatory authorities in town, which largely have shared responsibilities. Think of a Venn diagram where the circles overlap only when they want to. They kind of move away from each other based upon the facts of every given situation. This would resolve that and place Concom on firm footing. There are those, I would put myself in this camp, that say the wetlands law already has significant authority for conservation commissions to act in stormwater issues that don't involve protected resources. But getting people from here to there is harder to do based on what everyone else is doing versus having your own bylaw, your own general bylaw. So this is a timely discussion to have, based on what we've been up against. You know, the lion's share, the calls we fielded in town hall in the last six to eight months have had to do with stormwater.
Yeah, so I'm not looking to delay their process, because we have a very limited amount of time. But at the same time, I want to make sure that they, at least, this consultant's aware of what our challenges are in town. So in general, you don't normally have the neighborhoods like we have, and that I'm discussing. But we definitely need to do something with it. I fully agree with you on that.
Mike might actually already be there. We're Green Communities participant. And with that, my understanding is we were forced to adopt the stretch code? And doesn't the stretch code tap into?
Well, we already have the stretch code. I don't know if it does.
So town meeting adopted the stretch code. There is the super fragileistic expialidocious stretch code that we're, we haven't put up for a vote yet.
But that stretch code does tap into stormwater on these smaller lots that Mike was mentioning?
I'm gonna defer to a builder.
I'm not, I'm not sure. I have no idea. I think a good plan of action is, at least, these two have a conversation about it, not to hold up the process, because we don't have any time left to be playing around with this thing. And we've had a large amount of issues with the larger developments in town, so. Who's, Matt, you and I had a conversation about the enforcement authority on this. Would that still be the building commissioner?
No, I think Mr. Benoit pointed out this anticipates that the perma-granting authority would be the Conservation Commission.
And their reviewing agent could be assigned by the commission and likely would be the Conservation Agent.
Yeah, and the only concern I have with that is with any appointed boards, on any given day, they could change, right? So you want, you want to have consistency through the process. So the Conservation Agent or some other staff member would probably be appropriate for enforcement. That's all I have. I don't know if anybody else has anything to ask on this. We went from trying to fill our time slots to try to end them now.
Sorry about that.
No, that's all right. I tried to get Paul the same two or three times. He wouldn't do it, so.
I hear he whistles.
Yeah, let me go back and at least look at the bylaw one last time before it gets finalized at town meeting and see if there's a provision I can put in there somehow to allow for those smaller developments. I just gotta think how to do it, because most of the meat and potatoes is contained within the regulations. So it would, at this point, really, it would just be making sure that we set up the bylaw to allow for those smaller development regulations, so we don't have to do this again.
Having said that, that twenty-ten town meeting was not pretty. The townspeople didn't take a whole lot of liking to an overreach of stormwater, so find the balance there.
And good luck.
That is, that is what I heard.
Okay, if nobody else has anything on the stormwater, the next thing we have is the Sutton Douglas. We're gonna just finish up with Mr. Benoit, so that way he can.
Thank you for your time. I'm gonna jump out.
Thank you a lot. Thank you. Sutton Douglas Development LLC subdivision. You have anything on that, Matt?
Yes, so I believe in your packet, you may have a copy of the planning board decision. If not, there's a condition to their decision for the Sutton Douglas subdivision that they needed to transfer the open space to the town prior to, prior to start construction. So I have Tim Flynn, who is on Zoom, who's also a applicant. Would you like to introduce yourself and kind of the idea behind this article?
Thank you, Matt. Thanks for your time. I know it's nine, so I'll try and make this as quick as possible. So the idea behind this development was to, you know, try and make right what we found out through the process of acquiring the land and then going through the zoning process and getting this approved, was that, you know, some time back, there was a, you know, there was some land that was supposed to be deeded back to the, to the town that didn't occur. This land is buildable, but as a, you know, as an ongoing commitment as to further our relationship in town and, you know, to appease and really try to put a lot of the butters' concerns at ease, we are looking to, you know, deed this land over. I believe it's, Matt, apologies, I don't have it in front of me. It's about fifty-four acres. Back to the, back to, I believe, the Conservation Commission for, to be overseen as open space.
Does anybody have any questions for this gentleman? Anything else to add to that?
So, Mr. Chairman, the draft deed is under review by town council. They gave us an opinion, a fraction of their full opinion on the, on the deed so far, but it's to be modified in the future, but it should be ready for our next meeting.
Anybody else have anything on this?
I also pulled the plan up on the screen. It's already been, the lot layout has already been recorded, and the plan has, has the parcel outlined in our, in our GIS maps. And that is the property. It has an outlet onto Mumford, an outlet onto Conservation Drive.
Nobody else has anything else on this? All set then? Got that set for now. Matt?
Reminders. Thank you, everyone.
Yep, thank you. So a couple things, so we can help the school department leave. You want to do the district-wide facility study for us, Paul and Courtney? Good evening.
Good evening.
Are you still awake?
We all are, if I'm correct. So, you know, I know you have in front of you our proposal for a warrant article to do a facilities audit of all of our buildings, the four buildings and the public schools. I can go through a rundown, or I could just answer. I mean, we all know that the primary's forty-five years old, the high school's twenty years old, the elementary in the middle are ten. I can answer questions, do a presentation. I know it's nine-ten, and you still have a boat, few more articles to go, so. Whatever works for you.
So what's your overall goal? You don't have to go through all the, so what's your, your goal in trying to put this study? I guess that's the easiest way to go about it.
Sure, so again, if you look at our capital requests over the past five, six, seven years, it's all around maintenance, repairs. We've done a great job going through and analyzing, and analyzing things. We'd love to have a comprehensive report that will provide documentation of all of our facilities and everything to be able to assist the town in us in creating a five- or ten-year plan as to how we can make sure that our buildings continue to be maintained the way they should be maintained.
Basically, so particularly with the primary school being forty-five years old, I mean, things are starting to, to, you know, everything is getting very old. The only thing we've done at the primary school during that time, a roof, work was done on the cafeteria in the hallway to the gym in two thousand and three, in the section where the childcare is located. That was replaced in two thousand and seventeen, approximately six thousand square feet. And a preschool bathroom was done in two thousand and twelve. But other than that, the entire building is, is very, very old. The high school is over twenty years old. As you know, we had that rooftop unit that includes the two compressors and evaporator coil. That needed to be replaced this past summer, and just last week, the, oh, so tired of getting the thing. The condensing unit for the school lunch freezer went. So we immediately had to get a rental. We had to move all the food out so it wouldn't go bad, and we are having that replaced on Saturday. The cost for that is twelve thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars, but that's just one little unit. So district-wide, we have four hundred and sixty-one HVACR separate equipment units. A number of those are at the high school, and a number of the components of our buildings, the major components that we just want to, in order to make a good decision with regard to knowing what, where, what the condition is in each of the buildings, to be able to know where they're at, and also for the purpose of prioritizing. And I think, you know, it's a good idea for the, not only for the town side, but for the school side as well, as far from a prioritization of the projects, possible full-on renovation, particularly for the primary school, and then determining the financing and the possibility of MSBA as well. We can also look into that. They did resurrect, as I mentioned, at the Capitol Planning, their accelerated repair program. So we would obviously look at that at the same time, once we get that report. So that's basically where we were coming from.
I have a couple comments, but I don't want to dominate the conversation. Does anybody have any questions on this before I ask anything?
The only thought I had was, where are we with the joint staff member to be the facilities person? We had talked.
And that's what I was going to lean into, so. So it may be, if you don't mind, I'm going to approach the subject. So the timing may be, it may work, right? So you're in a position where you need to get a handle on what your equipment is in your buildings and things like that. We're in the process of a transitioning point where the staff's moving around. It potentially could open up a possibility for a position. If we use it town-wide, if you, you did your studies 200,000?
I think we discussed.
We said up to.
Up to.
Because it depends on how.
It just gets estimated now, so I'll forget all about it in a couple minutes, so you don't worry about it. So you figure a couple hundred thousand dollars. So if you're going to hire a qualified facilities guy, I'm going to guess that he's going to be somewhat equivalent to what a building commissioner would make at the high end of things, right? So you get somebody in that's on staff that may be able to help get a handle on it versus having a company come in and they just give you this whole bunch of paper. And if you're not having an active plan that you can just work on and address and get it done, that report's going to be like the 1998 master plan that they're trying to rewrite now that nobody ever looked at after. It's just something to consider. This is a conversation between the school department and the town administrator, see if you can come to a point where there's a possibility there to try to combine forces that we could address the issues, right? We have issues on, within the town buildings here. I'm a little more privy to it than my other members here because I'm on the capital process, so I get to see what everybody needs and wants and everything else. It might be helpful for you guys to do it. Matt and I have had different conversations as to how that particular person could be utilized and if he has his thoughts and I have my thoughts, not necessarily trying to tell each other what to do, we just bounce some ideas off to do things. Something to consider, to think about. I'm not saying to stop what you're doing with your thought process on as far as getting a study done, but it's something that you may want to consider. It might be more helpful for you to, just to get more continuity going through the capital process, getting your vendors, it's like you've, during the capital process, you express the trouble that you have in trying to get people to be responsive as far as vendors and subcontractors and things like that. Once you have somebody that actually does this for a regular living, they'll going to be, they'll have contacts in which they can get you numbers that may help you. Because that's the challenge I have in capital, right? You come and it's like, I need this, but I'm really not 100% sure what it is and then, well, how do I put it on the capital budget, right? So the two of us are going back and forth with it, so just a thought, that's all it is.
Again, glad to take the conversation of the day away with Mr. Or Jack.
I think it may be helpful for everybody involved. I think it's a conversation between, you're under the table with you and Matt, then in the board here, because you guys know the daily operations, what you're faced with. I get a very small snapshot on capital and even smaller picture at this table, so just a thought.
Absolutely.
And as you can tell, Tim started right off with it and then Ross echoed it, so it's something that's on everybody's mind. We haven't even discussed it, but it's just a little chatter here and there that it's there, so.
Oh, yeah.
If it's something that works, great. It's great for everybody, so.
Do that, yeah.
Right? But I do want to thank Courtney for her little spreadsheet that she sent over that's going to help me on capital. That will work well because it simplifies the process so then we get them, if we get them. But if we get them each January, it'll make the capital process much easier.
So are you saying that the timing of everything with this warrant article potentially going on the annual town meeting and maybe some conversations we could have, the stars are all aligning?
It may.
Okay.
It's something that you guys need to talk, because I don't think we have enough information to be able to tell you that, right? This is something that I think the administration of both, both sides of the, or that end of the table, need to just come together and just compare notes and see if you can make it work, I think. So what I'm getting out of what these guys are saying, that you would have support, right? So, and that's huge, right? So if you're getting support, you're not like, you two come up with a brainstorm and then you're going to come see us and try to sell it to us and we're not even on that page, it's very difficult, but it might help you.
Sure.
That's all, just a suggestion.
Always open to target. Anything else?
I don't have anything else on that. Any of you guys?
Just school specific, I guess. Curious, is the high school at capacity?
No.
No. And is the one under that, we'll call it the, my kids.
The old middle school, the old high school, the new middle school?
Intermediate, we used to be intermediate, yeah.
Are they at capacity? We still have a little bit of space, a little bit of space there. Class size and some of the grade levels are big, but as far as empty rooms, we still have, we still have a little bit of room to add if we needed to.
So the reason why I say that, and I know we're constantly looking at the BBT enrollment and what that has happened, and I remember speaking with a teacher maybe six months ago, said that, and this is someone that's in the building like you guys are, you know, constantly, he identified the eighth grade class being disconnected from the high school as a reason which it's much easier to cut ties with the school community. So has the school committee or have you guys ever looked at bringing the eighth grade into the high school?
Courtney, you could talk about that.
Well, it used to be part of the high school and part of the whole selling, if you'll remember, because you were around at the time was, you know, as far as building the elementary school and also the intermediate school was bringing the eighth grade down. That was a whole, one of the biggest, big things, I won't say biggest, big things about selling the whole school project at the time.
Yeah, and I think it worked in the opposite direction, right? You got a school, but there's no tie in the eighth grade to.
Oh, no, but I'm just saying what, you know, when they did propose the project, yeah.
But I mean, would you guys consider that again?
I think we, one thing we would have to look at would be the, would be the funding mechanism with when we receive reimbursement from the MS, was it through the MSBA?
Yeah.
That it was done. How was it sold? So we'd have to go back and look at that.
See if it's tied.
That was tied right into the whole project.
Yeah.
Yep.
But we have talked about it.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, let's get back on what we're doing. So under here, we have two different things, Matt, and so you just helped me to see if it's the same thing, 18 and 19. 18 is BBT roof reconstruction replacement and rooftop HVAC and then BBT creation and stabilization account. And then we have on our regular agenda, BBT proposed warrant articles. Any of these, thank you, any of these the same or are they all three different things?
They are the same.
Okay.
But here it's shown as placeholder on the warrant, and I think there's a threshold question of whether or not this board even wants to put these articles on the warrant. I think that's your prerogative. And I'll check that with town council and make sure that you don't have any requirements anywhere to put things on your warrant. I don't think you do if you haven't received notice required by the agreement that formed the BBT catchment area and school funding mechanism. So I would encourage members of this board to review Dr. Fitzpatrick's presentation in FinCom on the video from February 27th. From, you know, the beginning to the end of his presentation, it's about half an hour, and vet for yourselves, you know, what you think is going on here with these two specific things. There's concern amongst the town managers and administrators that I speak with, and I think we're five or six strong, on a regular basis, over the way this is being structured and whether or not we have a clear indication whether this debt should be operationalized and put on our operational budget or whether we want to take it to the ballot box as a debt exclusion under Prop 2 and 1/2. The overwhelming consensus amongst us is that we recommend to our communities that you put it on the ballot as a debt exclusion and let the taxpayers decide whether they want to pick up this debt. Then that kicks off a process. So if town meeting approved this warrant article, you would then have to have an election or put this item on an already scheduled election before September 15th. So it makes things really tight because here we are on March 12th, town meeting's May 6th. So you're setting off a series of timeline decisions if you agree that you want it to be excluded debt. There's been some difficulty pinning down what the project exactly is. It's $10 million, it's being marketed as a roof, and yet if you listen to the doctor's presentation, he says at one point, the majority of the spending would actually be for rooftop HVAC units, and the roof itself is coming in more like 4.4 million, which sounds a little bit more plausible to me because it's X times the number, it's the exact same material that we're putting on our roof here at the municipal center, so it's, you get a little bit of a per square foot cost and you could, even assuming economy's of scale and other things, it's still right about right at 4.4, so what do you intend for? The other item here is the stabilization account. We have recent experience doing this, right? If you have a special purpose stabilization account, it is usually restricted to the specific purpose for which it is set up. And once that project or funding need is addressed, you have the other question, what happens to the remainder? Does it become part of a rolling capital budget, a source of funding for BBT into the future, or should it be returned? Because once we fund the projects we say we wanted them to do, shouldn't we get our proceeds, some of our proceeds back or offset our debt payments or some such arrangement? There is none of that detail provided to the municipalities presently. So the effort that is ongoing right now is to get BBT to actually disclose more details about what their plans exactly are and what it is they're asking for so we know what we're asking the taxpayer to do. So this is a little bit controversial, these two provisions.
And that stabilization account, is that, do they already have one?
They have a.
Is this a special stabilization account that's going to be similar to what we do with the.
I can't say I know the answer to that question. When they close their budget every year, it's called something terrible. I think it's called errors and deficiencies or.
Excess.
Excess and deficiencies, but I like errors.
It's similar to our free cash.
Excess and deficiencies, it's like free cash, right?
That's like saying found money.
Errors and deficiencies.
Errors and free and found money.
When I go home and I look at the note on the refrigerator, that's errors and deficiencies.
Yes.
Anywho, so he has that so-called almost free cash account. I can't say, because I've never looked at his finances that closely, whether they have other special purpose stabilization accounts or not.
What I would be concerned with, just as we set up our own special stabilization account, how does the money come out and by whom, right? So is it by the consensus of 13 towns or is it by the consensus of their school committee or whatever, whatever the case may be? And is it, it's like we set up our special stabilization account even though we labeled it, if the, if the situation arose and we had two-thirds vote, we could take that money out and use it for something other than what we originally intended it for. Which is not what I want to do, but I would like to know that, if they have the same kind of guidelines in there, right? It sounds great to label it stabilization account, but it's all on how you manage that money, right? Now, I don't worry about it so much in this town, we're pretty strict on what we do. It's not just loose.
So our goal right now is to try to draft language for you for both the warrant article and any motion to be made at town meeting, if you decide to put it on the warrant, that would reflect the fiscal controls and concerns that we have at that. I know one community has already vetted their language, I think Upton has with their town council, but I want a chance to run it by Rich Bowen before I make a recommendation to you.
Anybody else have any questions on that?
So if we do nothing and the 12 other communities do something, we're along for the ride anyway, we have to, at that point, it's either going to come out of operating or we're going to go through a debt exclusion.
Well, actually, they only need eight, or is it eight or nine? Nine other communities, they don't need 12, they only need nine.
Two-thirds.
Right. So if they get nine communities, it goes, it doesn't matter what you wanted to.
But, Mr. Chairman, I think there's more to it. It's a good question. If the town were not to put, if Douglas were not to put it on your warrant, but everyone else did and it passed, so here's what's weird, I don't know the answer. If everybody's language is just a little bit different, how does it get reconciled? Right? And I also don't know if we did, if the town of Douglas did nothing and it passed everywhere else, and there was critical mass around a specific language that nine passed it, it would still, I think, get kicked back to Douglas to determine whether you were going to do it as excluded debt or operational debt. I think you'd have another bite at that apple.
Yeah.
Because I don't think anybody can tell you what to do. They're going to tell you that they want the money, but they're still going to leave it up to you on how you do it, whether it's on the budget or off. This is uncharted, I don't think anybody's been here before on this. I know we just went through this in Westport with Diamond, but they're building a whole new school, right? So it went to town meeting, it had a tough night, but it passed very barely. It went to the ballot, it lost. Everybody had a panic attack. We're not going to have a Hope Tech school to send our kids to. They made another run at it and it barely, barely passed. So I think there's one of these things where it's good to get the public involved at the level of the ballot box so that they understand that's, you know, 60 some odd grand a year for 20 years if the entire 10 million is raised and used, and give them a voice in whether they want to exclude that from Prop 2 and 1/2 or not. And, you know, that could go either way, and I don't know, there are a lot of BBT families in this town, right? At any given moment, 20% of the high school population, aged population, is going to BBT. So you can't say you exactly think that because the community has a track record of being fiscally conservative that they may not support it because there are, there's a lot of support for BBT, so. In the intervening time, it might be good for everybody to circle around and see what people think.
We have nothing else on that. We, the last thing on our annual town meeting is to ratify fire and police contracts. So anybody have any questions on that?
Well, we got to get them to you. The highlights are, you know, and I've said this everywhere I've gone, the base rates are up significantly. It was a decision that we made going into the negotiations as the employer's team, so one select board member on each, the chief of the department, the town administrator, assistant chief was present with fire, the lieutenant didn't negotiate on the police side. But the union provided us, both unions provided us with a significant amount of information as to competitive rates on an hourly basis for their services, and we hammered out contracts that reflect Douglas's ability to staff and pay for these positions. We're currently defaulting, I'm going to speak more to fire and ambulance at the moment, to continuing to have a smaller staff that works a more aggressive schedule, a 56-hour schedule, and giving them higher salaries as opposed to continuing to try to provide the service by hiring more people. That's just where we're at, that's where we think we need to be. There is just a shortage of people qualified to serve in these roles, and we find ourselves, if we don't offer competitive wages and benefits, in a very difficult spot trying to cover the shifts and maintain the advance. to cover the shifts and maintain the advanced life support level of service.
So is that going to be the business model moving forward, or are you going to still continue to try to recruit to reduce that burden on the staff?
I think our business model going forward is to recruit good employees and spend the money to educate them, if they need the training, to reach certain levels of proficiency. It's becoming increasingly obvious now that the pool is so thin that if we're considering, seriously considering people who may have questionable background, a background check, or a difficult reputation, that we've reached the end of our rope, that we just can't go there. We've got to hire people, to the extent that we can, people that we know, either from being qualified firefighters, call EMTs, or employees of another town department who have crossed over and done some time as a qualified firefighter. It makes more sense. If we know somebody's going to show up to work, and they're responsible, and they're well put together, we'll get them through the academy, we'll get them to punch their ticket, at least as an EMT basic, so that we can staff. On the police side, it's much more difficult, because now you have to meet all of the police officer standards of training requirements, not only for your training, but as you go through your career, you don't have much room to make mistakes. And so it's gotten really difficult to find people who want to be police officers for that reason. There's a lot of pressure on the profession. I think some of the political anxiety has dissipated a bit, because everybody realizes the folly of trying to cut police expenditures in major urban cities with crime rates--
Not a good business plan.
It's like, no kidding, they really are protecting you folks. So I think that's gone by, but there still is the concern. The job has gotten incredibly complicated. And I think we're doing the right stuff here, bringing in mental health professionals that are involved in some of our calls, providing that additional expertise and de-escalation experience on scene, so that it's not all on the police officer by himself or herself to provide those answers. But it's an evolving profession, and it's getting really hard to get people into it. So we took moves that we did in these contracts, hoping that the public will agree with us at town meeting.
So with that, we're down to your report. We exhausted everything else.
I think we're all exhausted, period. I think I recommend that the board skip executive session. I don't have new information to give you. So at this point, I'm only going to say, I want to distribute the current status of the budget as it's in the FinCom flyer format, and simply try to sum it all up in a nutshell and say, the resources are available for me to roll with my department heads' recommendations and requests. No one has asked me for anything that is beyond the reservation, beyond the pale of what they need to do every single day, just to make their equipment work, to keep their employees well-equipped and well-trained, and to pay a competitive salary. I just haven't heard that. I think we are going to see some dynamic growth in library and adult social center budgets, because we're beginning to serve way, way more people than we ever did at both of those institutions. So I would call attention out to circulation figures and patron figures at the library, as well as the sheer number of people taking advantage of the adult social center. And Patrice is at the point now where she's limiting many activities to Douglas only. I think the bus, we were laughing today, her and I, because we didn't want the bus to be a flop, so we really pushed the bus, and now the bus is like killing us, because it was actually sold for reasons that we could have anticipated. We just didn't know how Douglas residents would receive it. But if you don't want to park far away and have to walk across traffic, if you don't like to drive in inclement weather, or if it's going to get dark early in the winter, you know, now the bus comes to your house, picks you up, takes you to the adult social center. You might stay there all day, do three or four activities, have lunch. And so now, you know, St. Patty's Day is 59 people, and she's turning people away, and there's a waiting list. So we're just at capacity with a lot of these functions, so we have to staff accordingly. It's not a big ask, frankly. It's a couple of part-time positions and some expenses at the library, but for the most part, these are two departments that have managed to run since the--
Pandemic?
The override--
Oh.
With very little additional resources, other than the director's staff being increased. So there's across the board, but the lion's share of what I'm allocating in this budget, here you go, there's one, two, three, four copies, is still going to education. You know, Douglas Public Schools and BBT taken together, a little close to $780,000 worth of the new growth, so almost half. I am still, and this will be my last note, Mr. Chairman, I am still closing the draft budget at a positive number. So I'm not balancing the zero. I'm at close to $200,000 in the black. March--
So that's going to be on our excess and edits?
No. No errors or deficiencies here.
Errors and deficiencies.
Or excess.
Excess.
Found money.
You're distracting me. I'm trying to end the meeting.
Go ahead.
Originally, we were trying to, I was trying to reserve enough of the new growth in the budget, the new revenue, to put the town in a good position in its negotiation with any potential future site for a highway bond, so you wouldn't have to raise and appropriate all that, or transfer it from free cash, that you would have this money set aside. The trouble with that is, March is good for surprises, last-minute surprises, like, oh, I don't know, the cost of a consultant to do an environmental cleanup for a fuel spill in the basement. Look, we knew it was going to cost us money, but we got the invoice today at 5:00, and it was a good deal more than we anticipated. That is why usually when I do the budget, I'm trying to keep a fairly substantial amount of cushion as we come down the end, because this happens every single year, no matter where, what municipality I've worked for, and it happened in the private sector, too. You're just about to put a bow on the budget, and somebody comes in and says, oh, do you remember that so-and-so's mainframe computer died, and it's going to be $100 grand? I was like, ah, no. So that's where we're at. I have no doubt in my mind that we will be well above zero as we come to the end of the process. I just want to say, to this point, I have not said no to any department head, and I've met with all of them on their requests, except for some of the smaller ones. But all the major departments have agreed with their requests. The only thing I took back, I took back $10,000 from the tree warden, is I had increased it by $10,000. And then when Adam had a whole bunch of, a case to be made for a whole bunch of additional things he needed, he said, give me some of that $10,000 back, so I can balance you out without hurting the budget too much. But other than that, that's where we're at. That's what we're working on right now, really, is just the budget and all these other items in the warrant article. So I don't know that going back over that's going to be helpful at this point in the day.
Anybody have any questions, Ron? Seeing as we've exhausted everything on our little list, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Hey, don't fight--
You can stay all night, but you can't stay here.
Don't fight for it. Can I have one? Lisa made a motion. No, she can't. All right. Thanks, Max. A second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?